Joe Legent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is opening comments.
I want to thank the Public Works Department for we could hit with a lot of seaweed. In fact, a couple of people have called me and they want to replace seawalls. And a long way to come before they had seaweed in their grass. I told them we'd have to, I think you all got a letter from, an email, so. But the Public Works did a great job and I continue, their performance is very, very good. And by keeping the town as it's been clean. That's all I have.
Angelo?
I'm all set. Thanks, Tim. I'd like to thank Police Fire for their efforts down at the back rocks. A friend of mine actually went for a walk and did a nosedive. She's going to be okay, but they did a lot of good work to, not to save her, but to make, to really help her. They did a great job. Thank you. Selectmen meeting schedule, end of summer is over. We'll be meeting on Thursdays, first and third Thursday of the month. We'll be meeting next Thursday because we missed last Thursday. Someone on vacation. Approved minutes of eight-eight eighteen.
That's at seven.
At seven, yes, thank you. Seven o'clock, 7:30 is crazy. Executive minutes of eight-eighteen and regular minutes of eight-eighteen.
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of eight-eighteen and the executive session minutes of eight-eighteen.
Say it. Comments?
I'm okay with the, the regular minutes, the executive minutes are wrong. There's a couple of things that are missing, I'd like to go over those before we accept them.
Okay. Okay. Is that good? All right with you?
Well, we're going to amend the, the motion. He moved that the executive minutes be approved at the same time, so we've got to withdraw the executive minutes.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time. Okay. Regular minutes.
I will rule that we accept the regular minutes for the eight-eighteen, eight-eighteen meeting, regular Board of Selectmen meeting.
I will second their motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move, I move, Mr. Chairman, that the executive minutes be on the agenda next week, okay? So we can get that off our table.
Second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Hi there. Jim Walsh, 33 High Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to inform you and the public that we have a couple of events coming up that might be of interest. On the weekend of September 29, 30, we will be having a guided tour of East Point for, led by birders. Linda Pivotcheck will be the guide, leading that expedition. Afterwards, we're going to have a talk at the home of Tom Costin, the younger, by the former president of the Essex County Ornithological Society, who will discuss the importance of East Point and its wild nature to the migratory patterns of birds throughout the East Coast. So I'll give some more information, more precise information on that later on.
Did you say September 29?
Yes.
Okay.
The 29th and 30th.
Okay.
We're not, we're, we have to go with Mr. McCoy's schedule. So, and then the following weekend, on October 6th and 7th, there will be an arts program. As you may know, a few weeks ago, we had a plain air arts weekend where artists from around the North Shore came and painted the East Point Lodge Park Forty Steps area because of, of course, its intrinsic beauty. And this, both of these events, by the way, are sponsored by the Nahat Preservation Trust. And the Preservation Trust, of course, is committed to preserving the ecological, environmental, and aesthetic properties of the Forty Steps, East Point Lodge Park area. So there will be further information on this in the coming weeks, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Pete Rogers, 44 Pearl Road, Nahat. We have some future worries. We'll probably be facing a large debt exclusion override sometime in the future for the sewer work. So noting this handy guide, Citizens Guide to Town Meetings, put out by the Secretary of State's office, I noticed that two-thirds of a town's voters are required to permit the selectmen to do a taking by eminent domain. Does any of the three of you really believe that two-thirds of the voters in this town will support it? And if not, why are we retaining an attorney whose specialty is eminent domain? Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else?
Bill Mahoney, 179 Willow Road, Nahat. I understand Northeastern's on the agenda today, and again, I go back to last winter when we had that special meeting regarding Northeastern, and all three of you gentlemen supported stopping expansion for Northeastern. I would, I believe you made a motion as well, and I would hope you will continue in that vein of supporting the townspeople, the 1700 people who support stopping expansion for Northeastern. Thank you.
John Fallett, 185 Bass Point Road. I'm here because I have had over the past 10 or 15 years, continuous flooding of my lower level. I have a office in the lower level, a garage, storage, workshop, and nearly every storm, where there's a downpour, all of, or 90 percent of the water coming down Tri-Mountain Road, which is about a block-long incline to the top of Tri-Mountain Road. Nearly all of the water coming down that road passes by drains that have been blocked for years, and are never cleaned or made to work. And so consequently, the water coming down Mountain, Tri-Mountain Road fills that portion of Bass Point Road and runs down my driveway into the lower level of the house. There's one other aspect to it that makes it, a couple more aspects to it that I wish to discuss. One of them is that the water is, on certain occasions, full of oil from cars parked on Tri-Mountain Road, leaking oil. So consequently, not only do I get water, I get sludge and oil to clean up afterward. The second part of my complaint here is that this constant flooding has resulted in my making a claim from the flood insurance program for the damage. This has put me on a frequent damage list that now doubles my insurance costs nearly I ask, can you, I have some plans. I have drawn plans in the past on how to handle insurance, I mean, how to handle the drainage issue. Part of it is very difficult to deal with because the drain water goes through my property and ends at my seawall. So consequently, I have damage to the seawall. The drain is now blocked totally. I have drawn various plans in the past on how to relieve the drainage problems, and things have been done, but not according to the plan.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll bring that up on the Town Administrative Report to have the DPW look at it under the Town Administrators when he sets it up. Okay? We'll look into it.
John, question. This is the first we've heard about this. You've never come forward before to give us any problems that you've had in the past. This is the first time I'm hearing this problem.
Right.
Am I correct?
Well, I don't know.
Well, I, I have never heard that problem before.
Right.
Do you have plans with you?
Have I got a plan with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why don't you give it to us, and I'll give it to the Town Administrator, and we'll get the Public Works down to get those drains cleaned out tomorrow. All right? To make sure, okay? And we'll have the fire department go out and check the oil, the oil, where the oil is coming from those cars, if that's the problem. But if, we've got drains in that area. We've got, actually, there's three drains down in that bottom of Tri-Mountain Road, and if they're blocked, we can open those up. We have a sewer jet that will do that. So we'll get that done tomorrow. We could get that, the Public Works doing that tomorrow. And so, but this is the first time we've heard this complaint.
Yes.
I've never heard it before.
Right.
So we'll take, we'll all take the appropriate action, and if you want to leave those plans with us, with the Town Administrator, or you want to meet with him separately, is that all right?
I would be happy to leave plans, however, I only have my original copy. I have no means of making copies, and I will have to drop by a set of copies.
They can make them up here.
We can, we can make the copies up here. You'll give it to the, give it to us tonight, all right? And we'll, and then you'll come up and we'll follow up tomorrow to make sure those drains are open, okay?
Right.
That's number one, and then we'll follow up, we'll send the fire chief out to check out the oil. I don't know where the oil is coming from.
Yeah.
If it's from the cars, I, I just, you know.
I think you may have not understood that the current critical problem is not, not because there's oil with, with water that sometimes enters the house. The current problem centers around the fact that the seawall was damaged in the storm, knocked to smithereens, and so there is no exit for the, for the pipe that, that has been effective in, in draining the area.
Now, those drains are connected to an outfall, correct?
The drains go to an outfall that is my seawall at, at high tide line.
Right.
That area is totally destroyed in the storm.
All right, we're going to have to look at that.
We'll have it looked at.
Right.
Bring the plans to the Town Administrator, we'll copy them and get them back to you.
You want to leave the plans with us today? We'll give it, and we'll have copies made for tomorrow. All right? Okay? Yeah, give us the plans. Yes.
Yeah. And Tony?
If you want.
Well, we can, yeah.
We'll, we'll make the copies, and then you, you have time tomorrow? Do you have time tomorrow to meet with the Town Administrator in the morning?
Mr. Fallett and I have actually met.
Oh, you have?
Already a couple of times to talk about this, and I've actually talked to the DPW about it already. Happy to take a look at, I haven't seen these plans quite yet. It's a little bit more complicated than just cleaning the catch basin that's directly in front of his house because the outfall pipe actually goes through his property, and it's crushed on the other side along with other, his seawall. And unfortunately, there isn't, there's no easement there, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit more complicated that way. Obviously, the town wants to be as helpful as possible, and there's another catch basin next door that doesn't go through his property, that goes out on town property that we could maybe clean, but it's, his issue is a little bit more complicated than just getting down there and jetting them out.
No, no, I understand.
But, but I'm happy to continue the conversation with Mr. Fallett.
They're doing catch basins now, aren't they? I saw, I thought I saw them out there today doing them.
We have Castle Road, you mean?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a special request, I'll, can talk about that later.
Just one more thing, we write it down, Tony. At the top of Wendell Road, all the way down, you need to put a berm from the top all the way down because it's, there's water rushing into the woman's driveway at the end of Wendell Road, and it's just getting washed out. So there is a berm there, but at the very top there isn't, so the water just kind of rushes into the yard. That would be perfect.
We actually have a bid out currently for Chapter 90, Road and Berm is included in that, so why don't we take a look at it, and it's something that maybe we can add to that work that'll be happening before the end of the.
Right, because it's, it's very, it's needed up there. Okay, let's move on.
Bring this to me tomorrow. That's, if you want to bring it tomorrow, or you can leave it with me now. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Next item on the agenda. Anyone else for Citizens Forum?
I want to make sure we're clear here of what we're going to be doing. With his problem down there, there could be a temporary pipe put in to drain, you know, to keep the water away from his seawall. Obviously, the water coming off of the Tri-Mountain Road did not destroy a seawall.
Correct.
The ocean did it. So I, you've got to be, but if we move the pipe away from, in between the homes down there and take the drainage, and then I'd have the fire chief, whoever's cars leaking oil up there, that's, that seems like, I don't know, mind the problem, but I mean, they need to check it out.
Yeah.
All right, I want to just make sure that's clear.
Okay, anyone else, Citizen Forum? Okay, on to business. New business, Northeastern University, future interaction with Board of Selectmen. No proposals detailed to be discussed at this time. I've met with Northeastern myself and the Town Administrator three times. We have decided, and I am going to put it to a vote of the Board of Selectmen before we go, that the Board of Selectmen start doing the interaction with Northeastern. They are pleased to go along with that. I have some notes that I might refer to from the meetings, but we've decided that we will do this in public, for all of Nahat to see, all of you out there in TV land, this will be done in open session. So, without further ado, I'll accept the motion that the Board of Selectmen continue future interactions and our negotiations.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Further discussion?
No. I do have a motion that would.
All right. Afterwards, but I want.
No, I'm, I'm all set. I think it's, I think that this is the way we should go.
I wanted the Board to be fully on board. I would next, next ask that the four Northeastern people come up and sit here with us. Oh, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to come, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think this is excellent, because we're going to be dealing with it directly, and I think it's the way to go. And we need to sit down with them and hopefully get this moved off the table.
Richie, it's hard to hear you.
I'm in favor of this, because eventually it's going to come to the Board of Selectmen for a vote, a discussion, and clarity, and I think it's excellent. I'm not too sure that I, I know the chairman wants open, open and sincerity, but sometimes it's, it's good to have an executive session so we can discuss it and get the proposal. I, I, first of all, I'd like to vote on that separately, but I would like to, this direction that the Board's taken is very, very good, because we're dealing with just the three members of the Board and the Town Administrator, and that's the way to go from now in the future with Northeastern. So that we, because we're the ultimate responsibility of this property, work out something with Northeastern so that we don't, you know, there's no other committees and other people negotiating, and there's a clear cut, defined track to the ultimate goal. So hopefully, the Board will, I think it's, it's going to be very, very good, and I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Call the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote. Please come up here for Northeastern people.
Would you just grab your seats? Hope, all right, if you just want to stand, whatever you want to do. Just introduce yourselves.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Ralph Martin. I'm Senior Vice President and General Counsel at Northeastern University. I'm here with colleagues from Northeastern University, John Tobin, who's our Vice President of City and Community Affairs, Kathy Spiegelman, who's our Vice President for Campus Planning, and Jeff Trussell, who's the Director of the Marine Science Center here in the town of Nahat. I just want to say a few brief words on behalf of the institution and on behalf of the people I'm with here at Northeastern. One, we appreciate the invitation of the Board of Selectmen to come and hit the reset button. And we don't know what that means. We're open to an exploration that involves discussing with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, what the possibilities are to do something out at the Marine Science Center that the town can be proud of, that is additive to the town, and that helps us fulfill the ambition of creating something that is world-class. World-class doesn't mean that it has to be mammoth. World-class doesn't mean that it has to be a dominant structure, but it's the quality of the work within the structure that we're interested in talking about with you and seeing how it can fit with your expectations. Now, a gentleman here mentioned the meeting in February. I think if we could put the toothpaste back in the tube and go back in time, we would, we would start differently, and that's what we hope this evening is, to hit the reset button. But since February and today, we've listened to a lot of people's concerns. We've met with people individually and as a group, and as groups, to hear what their concerns are. And what we look forward to doing over the course of the next several meetings is sharing with you how have we thought about and reflected upon the concerns that we've heard, and improvements that we've made, at least in our thinking, that might be reflected in, in a different structure and a different design that enhances our use and, as I said, is also additive to this town. So it's an exploration, and that's what we'd ask you to be open to. We'd ask you to be open to an exploration. The last thing I'll say, and I, and I think it's as important as anything else I've said, is at least two of us from Northeastern have been involved in government before, and it's not uncommon that during the course of any engagement, that things get raised as either anxieties or rumors or whatever. So let me say this, and I mean it professionally and as a representative of the institution. Unless you hear it from us, don't take it as verbatim, don't take it as truth. I'll cite three things. During the course of the past couple of months, we've heard a couple of things. One, that Northeastern was interested in buying an apartment complex in Nahat. Completely untrue. It's never happened, it's never been thought about, it's never been talked about at Northeastern. The other thing we heard at a meeting at someone's home here in Nahat is that we had pulled the building permit that day. We have not filed an application for a building permit. We would not do that without going through a process. And third was that we hired an attorney that was representing the town of Nahat. That is not true. And I don't doubt that other rumors may surface, but we're asking you, unless you hear it from us, or we've told the Selectmen or the Town Administrator, at least give us the benefit of the doubt. That's all we ask. So thank you, and we're looking forward to coming back and sharing our explorations and hopefully coming to a solution that works for everyone. Thank you very much. One of the things, I was told to speak up. One of the things that really caused me to have some agita was all the rumors. I think the guy from the planning board said it the best when he get up, what's his name, Dick? When he said, "There are more people in town who think they run the town than there are people." And it's very aggravating for us to be told that Northeastern has caved in, Northeastern has done this, I am going to do this, I am going to do that, blah, 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 blah. So we had to bring this to us, and it was time. After three meetings with, with Northeastern, they were ready to come forward. I do ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Balaletta to talk about comments from the town also, because he has some ideas, but I would ask that everything go through the Town Administrator. It's so important that the Town Administrator, yeah, talk to me, and first thing I'm going to do is call him, because he's the Town Administrator, not me. We've got to get away from that. Start with the Town Administrator. I've asked Northeastern the same thing. Please talk to the Town Administrator first. Don't call me at home, you won't get me anyway. I don't want to answer phone calls. He gets the money for doing it, he runs the town. That's how I look at it. Now, could you please comment on public comments to you or to us?
Sure. So, you know, I think that the Selectmen and the Chairman, the Board, myself envision this process going forward as inclusive, something that, you know, it's not just pulling it to the Board of Selectmen and not hearing from the community, but just taking the lead on it and making. on it and making sure that the process is understood and that the community feels like they're aware of what the plan is going forward. And so, part of that is forming some type of avenue for the community to come directly to myself and the Board of Selectmen. So whether that be some type of portal through our website, whether that be creating an email account of some sort, but then also, when meetings happen here publicly, that's also another avenue to hear comments from the town. As, there's going to be plenty of opportunity and I think plenty of desire by the, by the community to express comments, because as this process unfolds, things are going to change and there's going to be new ideas and new comments to be heard. So, one thing that I'll be looking into as an, as an initial next step is creating some type of avenue or portal or email account that the community can send formal comments in, into us that I will share with you, and maybe that's something that we can announce at the next meeting or the one after, as soon as we can get it up and running.
Okay. Thank you. And one last step that I thought of was, I have been privy to meetings with the Northeastern people because I'm Chairman and I decided that was my role, but because of the open meeting law, neither Selectmen has had the same privilege, so I'd like them to take any time now to ask questions, and any time that they wish to ask questions, they can go either through the Town Administrator or, probably that would be better. But if they want to call you, that's fine, too. I, I don't care. Do you have comments, gentlemen?
I've seen, I met with them also separately. I've, I've seen what they've, what their plans are, and I've talked with them, so I'm okay. I'm okay with it.
I said I'm okay with it.
Well, we, we're going to step up to the position, we know the town's position. They do not want expansion of Northeastern. Very simple. But we, we need, we need to sit with them, and they've got some new ideas and new suggestions. We need to listen, too. And I'm glad the Board is doing this, because we, you know, for 51 years, Northeastern has really not been a very good neighbor to us, and we want that to change. And I'm glad Ralph Martin came up and said that. We need to change, and I think we're willing to listen to that and sit down with you and hopefully come to some sort of agreement, because, but we know where the townspeople stand, and we represent the townspeople. So you have to understand that going into this. And the, you know, you could just see the signs, they just don't want the expansion, and everything goes along with it, the traffic, et cetera, so, but we need to listen, and I think we need to do that in a timely fashion, and come to some sort of agreement with them, because, again, we know where the townspeople stand. You know, they've been very, 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 with their signs, meetings, up there, you know, holding signs, and so, you know, but, and I want the Northeastern people to realize, we represent them. So that's, you know, and I think, you know, we, we need to do that, and we need to, but we also need to listen, all right? And hopefully, Northeastern has not been listening to us for many, many years. I think, we finally got some scholarships, you know, and then there were only half scholarships, and they got $25,000 at the Johnson School, and that was good, but after you look at it 51 years, you say, wow, you know. So I, you know, it's like, you know, then we looked at your pilot program, you know, with other communities, and it was kind of like disheartening to know that all that. So I think we, we, I like your, your comment about a new beginning. I'm hopefully, that's what it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further questions? No? Nope. Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much for coming, and this will be the start. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Take care, you guys.
Thanks, John, Kathy, Jeff.
Just a comment at the start of a new beginning, and I used the word "reset" at one of our meetings, but it was, the start of a new beginning is much better. But they've got to realize that we do represent the town. They're not going to, you know-
Well, let's, let's just-
But we'll move on. Okay. 3B, Board of Selectmen Liaison Committee.
Mr. Chairman, so there is no confusion. I would entertain a motion that we eliminate the Liaison Committee, since the Board will be doing public meetings with Northeastern, and there's no confusion on who is going to take, take charge of this. I would make a motion that we dissolve the Liaison Committee.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Discussion.
I want to thank the Liaison Committee. They've been very, very helpful. But I think the direction of the Board with the Town Administrator, taking over direct negotiations with Northeastern, will be better served, and then we can better serve the public as well. So there's no misunderstanding, misuse of rumors, et cetera. They'll hear it here first, and that's coming from you, Town Administrator, too. So I think that's, I think it's a new direction, as I said, and I think it's time we get to it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I would also like to thank the Liaison Committee. They did do an awful lot of work, but they're, they were to work between, actually, the Board of Selectmen and keeping Nahat wild, and, I mean, that's, now that we're taking this, the handle on this, I don't think there's a necessity for them anymore.
Okay. I'd like to thank them, too. I met with them only once, but I talked at length with them, and they worked real hard. They worked real hard. Okay. Other comments? Motion? Call the vote. Call the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Will you restate the vote, please?
Unanimous vote, 3 to nothing. Town Administrator report.
I still have old business.
Oh, I skipped one, sorry. Old Business, Special Town Meeting Follow-Up. Anyone?
Yeah, sure. I've gotten several complaints about the Special Town Meeting, the heat, the lack of information that was out there about how many people were going to be affected by this. So, I've got, there's a, there's a, there's a book of them in here, of different complaints from people that were not happy with the, the way it was handled, and I think that we should have, I would make a motion that we schedule another Special Town Meeting for sometime in November to rescind that vote and to inform people the proper way-
Stop, please.
-proper way on how this should be handled. When I did the FEMA maps, people were well informed of what I was doing, they knew if they were going to be put into a flood zone, which none of them were. I had to send out over 100 notices to people, letting them know months ahead of time what was going to happen, and I don't think anybody got a notice of this until they got their report. People still don't realize what, what's going to happen. My old house at-
Stop, are you?
Excuse me?
Stop, stop, please.
My old house at 20 Sunset Road is now in a floodplain, which is at elevation 60. Not bad. They have to go to the Conservation Commission to get a permit to put an umbrella up. So I think that, I think that-
Stop, please.
I would put a motion forward to rescind that vote, to have a Special Town Meeting. We did have a Special Town Meeting scheduled for September, September 17th, which would have been adequate, and I would put that motion forward. Mr. Chairman, do we schedule?
Before, before you do, I think in order to make a motion for another town meeting, I, I believe in order to make a motion for another town meeting, you have to have date, time, location certain. So my suggestion would be for the motion to be, to consider-
To consider-
To consider another meeting and what would go into that-
Yes.
And make those plans, and then later, you would make a motion for such a thing.
Okay.
Since we don't have those details right now.
Right. We don't, we, we, we'll work with KP Law on that, but I will put, I would put that motion forward, that we consider having a Special Town Meeting sometime in November to-
At sometime.
Yes.
We don't know when yet.
All right. Okay. I would say sooner than later. Have a second?
Oh, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of this at all. I don't believe we have, we need another Special Town Meeting. The people in Nahat have spoken, and they know which side it is. If you're going to have anything like this, since it was so very, very hot, the place was outs, just crowded, the complaints I received, and I received many for the first time in many, many moons, I think what we need to do is simply have a ballot question, like if you're voting for a state representative. Have people come in on a Saturday, have the polls open at 7:00 AM, you get a ballot after you checked off, and you vote one way or the other. And then that would be, we don't need, we don't need any more Special Town Meetings, we don't need a special vote, and things like that.
Well, that's what you're saying, Richie. You're saying we're going to have a Special-
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying, don't, don't, please, don't interrupt me. I think the way to go is to have a ballot question, not a Special Town Meeting. People know the issue, and since it was so hot, place was overcrowded, the speakers were, you know, it was confusing, to say the least, some of the speakers never got to speak one way or the other, and there was things made with the town moderator prior to that meeting that the people were going to speak. There was people standing in line, they were far against it, but they never got to speak because someone took so long to speak, and they went through their whole scenario. So I, I, I'm not in favor of another Special Town Meeting, but I am in favor, since the vote was a swing vote of four votes, so we should have a ballot question, and have it on Saturday, November, December 1st, somewhere, people are, everybody have a chance to vote on it, one way or the other. And again, because the vote, if it's swinging four votes, against this bylaw, and I think that's the way to do it, so there's no uncertainty which, which way people are going to vote on this thing. And they know the issue, they know it clear, cut, they've been through it, they divided it, cut, base, and everything else, and that's the way I see going. It'd be the fairest way, especially after that town meeting where the, you know, I don't know why, it was very, very hot, extremely overcrowded. We were, you know, and we were debating which way we could have. We couldn't have it at the Johnson School, we couldn't have it at the Country Club. There was a decision made, something to look at, to have it at Lowlands, rent a tent for 600 people, and it cost a fortune, but that's the only way we could have done it, to get everybody affordable. But this way here, for a four-vote swing, it's close enough to say, listen, people didn't get the chance to speak, and I think this way here, they can, it's a clear-cut vote on a ballot question, and they vote one way or the other. That's what I would move.
I'd like to correct just one thing, Richie. It was seven votes, and I, I agree with you, but you have to have, and we've discussed this, I've discussed it with a couple of people, and you would have a town meeting. We have the ability to Skype it in from, we could have the town meeting here, and we could have it at the Johnson School. They can Skype in, and that's the perfect way to do it, and you could have a ballot vote, and that's exactly what I meant, you know. We have a ballot vote, where people would come in, you have a four-hour period where they come in, the town clerk could have the ballots printed up, the machine could be in use, and you put the ballot in, and it's done. That's, that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. That's the way to do it.
Enzo, don't you think we had enough discussion on this thing? They cut, they've cut, cut it in half, basically, people with discussion, they know the issue, they know it clear-cut, it's going to be just a rehash of that meeting again, and it'll be, it'll take forever, because this time, there'll be no deals made with the moderator for prior speakers. Those speakers should have been chosen A, B, A, B, A, B, all the way down the road. You just can't cut off people from not speaking, and because of a prior deal, and there was a deal made, and it was just, it was wrong, absolutely wrong for someone to do that. And I, and I felt badly and very poorly that this should, this should have never happened this way. And it was so hot, so late, and the place was, this place only holds 250 max, and we had over 500 people, 550 people in here. It was just, it's just not the way to do business, and I don't like doing business with this, you know, you know. And then there's questions about people voting twice and things like that. I just think it's clear-cut, we have a quick ballot vote on a Saturday from 7:00 to 8:00, and then ballots are counted, and it's yes or no, one or the other. So I, you know-
I think people need to know, though, what, what this means for them. I mean, you can't, this is a complicated issue. I was on the Conservation Commission for 20 years, and you just can't do things like this without people being informed of what the consequences are for their property and their property value. I think that a town meeting, you could have it here, and you could have it at the Johnson School. You could have two places. You could Skype it in. We've talked about this with Lauren Goldberg, she's the, from KP Law, she's the guru in this stuff, and it's very simple. I, I, I move that we, we do it. We just have a ballot, with a ballot vote, absolutely, Richie. I don't disagree with you, to rescind that vote.
For next meeting, would you look into all of, all of what we need to do so we don't spend a lot of time? I think a ballot is the way, I agree with Richie. I don't know if we need a Special Town Meeting for that, because I don't know yet. Could you do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a look, work with KP Law, try and find out what the proper parliamentary procedure is for whatever it is the Selectmen want to pursue.
My end result is a ballot vote.
Yeah. And I would agree with that.
I don't think we need a Special Town Meeting to do that, but I don't know.
That's what I'll check on.
So look into it. Thank you. So let's do that for next meeting. Table yours, please.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you. Now the Town Administrator report. And just so everyone knows, that the irks from Taylor will only take so much of the yelling and clapping, and I will clear this room after Citizens Forum if this is the way it's going to go. I'll get the police here and I'll clear the room. I have the right to do that. Just because someone says something, don't scream and yell, because there are people out there who want to go the other way, too. Thank you for coming, but it drives me nuts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates on some activities that are happening around town. The first on the agenda is the Fox Hill Road and Castle Road stormwater drainage. Over the past few weeks and as recently as yesterday, there has been some progress. The DPW is making every effort to clear that awful, outfall pipe. We are, we're close but not complete. Actually, we'll be out there again tomorrow and hopefully have some, some more progress in the next couple of days. The goal is to get that outfall pipe cleared and be in use before the next season. Number two on the list-
The Fox, the Fox Hill Road people have been waiting. We're doing our best to get the pipe cleaned out for them, or an alternative way to take care of it. This is really good news. Thank you.
Can I just ask you, why don't we put the paperwork in for a bigger pipe, sat that process with the DEP? Just for the hell, just for the heck of it.
Well, I don't know if we need a bigger pipe yet.
No, I'm just saying, just to have it in place in case we want it.
Well, get it done first. I'd rather get it done.
Oh, no, they're going to do it anyway.
Actually, we took a look at that, and the easement right now is, actually, that was the next thing for me to take a look at, is what the easement actually allows for. I believe it's pretty specific to a 20-inch pipe, so that could be an issue.
Okay.
But it's definitely something that we've talked about, is increasing the capacity of that pipe.
On the other side, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Thanks.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman, upon your request, there's, there's been a request to put some signs up at Doggy Beach to make people aware that the part of the beach that's behind the Castle Road houses is off limits to dogs, that it's really from that point towards the causeway. Those signs have, are, have been designed, and we're waiting for the proof, and hopefully they'll be ordered and installed in the coming weeks.
Thank you. This goes back to, I've had conversation with neighbors from the other side of Castle Road, the dogs spent all kinds of time running behind their houses, 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. The police have been very, very cooperative to these neighbors, but it's taking forever. They can't get down there in time, the dogs are usually gone, and people need to be responsible for their animals down there. And I, I am this close to recommending that we close Doggy Beach unless it improves. And...
There's been a report of a pit bull down there, too.
Right. And some of the townspeople don't even bring their animals down because it's, it's full of animals from out of town. So I, we have to take care of the fact that the dogs are going back there, and, and thank you for the signage.
And I might just also remind folks that, you know, even though the weather has changed a little and it's gotten colder and it may not be beach season, the bylaw states that only dogs are to be on Doggy Beach up until October 1st. So still have another month to go before folks can bring leashed dogs onto other beaches.
Thank you.
We need to put that in the April warrant. The dogs, you know, they're, they're, they're running wild. The only way, either, and I'm with the chairman, shut down Doggy Beach completely, because it's, it's really not that hot residents using it. We've got, we're going to put some sort of, have the dog officers go down there with some assistance, find out who's using the beach, and where they're coming from, all these dogs. And I would cut that beach, Doggy Beach, in a cut-out of third. And as you go closer to the homes, I'd shut it down and have some signs across that that they can't go any further, you know? Divide the beaches and the quadrants and take a fourth of the beach out of the question so they're not running anywhere near those houses. The complaints I'm hearing is they're running up in the, up in the decks, and, and they're running all the way down. And they're not coming in from further on the other end, they're coming in from Doggy Beach. And these, again, they're not in the hot dogs, okay? And either we, we put a restriction, put them on leash, they have to have, they have to, they have to go by the leash law, and the dogs have to be on the leash, and they can't be running loose. Because that is just, it's, you're, we're creating a problem down there for the neighbors that are adjacent to Doggy Beach. And it's become out of, out of control. And I think it's a crisis, and I think we either vote tonight to have those dogs on leashes, so they're not running wild down there. They're just absolutely, and we're getting, we're getting, we, our resources, police, fire, dog officer, are being called to that area, and it's getting out, it's getting just absolutely out of control.
Well, what I can do is I can ask the dog officer to meet, meet with me and maybe brief me on what the situation is.
Yeah.
And bring something to you to review.
And all the calls, and all the people I talk to down there, we're thrilled with the police department, but as soon as they call them, you know, and by the time the police get there...
We've got to find out who's using those, who's using the beach, and I, I, I think 90% is coming from out of town.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I just think we've got to stop them, I don't know even where they're parking, but they're parking somewhere, and they're bringing their dogs down there. You know, it's like, it's, 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 it's become a major problem for those neighbors, and they don't deserve that. And I'm with the chairman, if need be, we'll shut down Doggy Beach. I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, that's it.
It's, it's difficult for the police to, to, to police it, I can tell you that.
Yeah, we...
They can't, they can't do it because they just don't have the time.
They don't have the manpower.
They don't know who's, they don't know if, if the person's from the hot or not from the hot. And there was somebody that got pinned by a pit bull last week, and, and, you know, I got to tell you, you know, that we need to do, I think we need to have some restrictions. Put, put it down further, like Richie said, you know? And leave that section towards Castle Road restricted, or shut it down. I, I would agree.
Well, if you, if you, if you'd like, I can bring the dog officer in and...
Yeah.
Maybe come up with a couple of different ideas or proposals to put in front of you to review, something to look at over the coming weeks.
If you would, not to interrupt, but if you would, make Richie's idea, I really like that, make that like number one with him, to see if that's feasible. We have to do something. That's, that's, Richie, I, cutting off us, from the 200 yards down from the houses or 100 yards or whatever it is.
Just something that, and then we got to find out, I don't know how we're going to do it. You got to put manpower down there to find out who's using the beach, and who's you, what dogs are there, and where they're from. Because it's like, we're the only one to have a Doggy Beach, and it seems that they're, they're coming from everywhere.
Yep.
And especially before a tragedy happens, especially a pit bull or Doberman or somebody gets bitten, and, and that's all we need. And just, it's, this is a warning, and we need to take, we need to take, take, pay attention here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I do, I do have a quest, a request for, and I don't know if you guys got it.
Yeah.
I think you should.
Yes.
It's all the dog park in the hot, have a dog park in the hot, so... That's a thought, too, if somebody wants to come up with an idea.
I actually, yeah, I've been approached by some people. They, they have thought about, not that I want this, but the old tennis courts down in Lowlands where it's fenced in? Unless we fix them as tennis courts.
Well, I, 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 again...
Oh, I'll fix the problem down there, Richie. That's what I agree.
I, I fixed the problem down there. We, we got a Doggy Beach, and, and it, it's like it's open session, and I don't want another dog park. That request behind the fire station? No, that's, there's kids playing soccer down there, baseball, that would be absolutely, I mean, and to have dogs free down there? No way. Absolutely no way. That's a playground. We've got two major playgrounds down there.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, one behind the Johnson School, then one at the, be, next to the fire station. That would be an absolute mistake.
Okay.
I'm totally against that. I'm going to tell you right now.
Just a thought, Rich.
Well, I understand, but that, that request came in, and I wrote him a letter, I, I wrote on the, I wrote no to him.
Good. You should have sent it to me, I wouldn't have brought it up.
Well, all right, well, I only had one copy.
My only concern is the, that Doggy Beach, it's got to be cut and dry, because I just think the police will be overloaded, you know, trying to figure out who is who.
Right.
So...
Well, we've got to start.
Let's just see how it works, you know? We want the monster coming, so it kind of calms down.
Okay. Let's move on.
We've got time to work on it.
The third one is Tudor Beach Storm Damage Repairs. You know, over the last couple of months, there's been some progress, obviously not as fast as I think people wish, but it is good to know that Dan Coffin, the Town Engineer, is currently preparing a recommendation letter for a ward and notice to proceed on that job. He's, he was waiting to hear from our contact from FEMA, which actually just reached out to us this week, and him and I are going to be on a phone call tomorrow morning with them, so it looks like that is moving forward, and hopefully we'll have shovels in the ground sometime soon.
Perfect.
Fort Ruckman, we recently received a report from EnviroTrak finding no significant risk of harm at Bailey Hill, at those both sites. Therefore, there will be no more need for remediation in that area, which is good. We expect Mass DEP to confirm, to confirm that the provisions of the consent order have been met and that the matter is closed. And lastly, I know the town wharf has been a big issue for folks here in town for quite some time, and just, you know, not that I have much to report on that, just that I, simply that I've had that at the top of my priority list. I've, I'm fully briefed on it at this point. I've worked, I've talked with our attorneys and our engineer, and I've actually requested to set up a meeting with the relevant parties that were hired to do that job, and their attorneys and our attorneys, to try and take the next step. So, you know, while I don't have any progress to report, just that it's on the top of the list and, and we're, and we're trying to get something done.
Terrific.
We need to make sure that the town wharf, as you go down that ramp, that left wall and around the corner, all has to be pointed up before we lose the whole top of the wharf. As you go down the ramp, this, it's, we got to put gun eye or something in those spaces, and it goes all the way down from the top of the ramp on the left side, all the way down and around the corner down the bottom. And that has to be done before winter here. It just, it's pointing up, it's a simple point up job. Maybe you can get an extra off, once you're finished Tudor Beach, and, and get an extra for pointing, pointing that, that wall up before we lose the whole top of the, the wharf. That thing's going to be, the maintenance, we, we've got to, you know, because the wharf is too expensive, we built, we spent too much money to let that decay like it has been. We got to stay on top of these things. And it's just, you know, it's along the ocean, and it's just a matter of time, you know? And that thing is, you know, we've got the ramp in, and they'll have to fix that impod. They have to do that. There's no question in my mind. They cut it short, and they got away with it. They think they got away with it. I just hope, don't pay them. That's very simple. When you don't pay people, people have a tendency to fix things.
Thank you, Richie. 5B, approve event requests.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for exhibit auctioned by NPT at Town Hall, 10:06, 18, and 10:07, 18, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for Admiral Dwa, Kids Party Flash Road Park, 9:16, 18, at 2:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Aye, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the one-day all alcohol liquor license for the Hot Better Than Association, NLSS fundraiser, 9:16, 18, from 4:00 to 8:00, 9:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Perfect.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Do you have that?
Yep.
Sign it now.
Yes, sign it now.
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Pat McCottle and Karen Savino as Beautification Committee Co-Chairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank, I just want to thank Mary Ellen Schuman. She was the co-chair or the chair for Beautification Committee for a long time, and she did a great job, and, and as you know, Mary Ellen's retired from the town in the hot, so she's found two good replacements. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Closing announcements. Flu Clinic, Wednesday, September 26, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Thursday, September 27, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Both days open to adults 18 years and older. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll move, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, cable people.